Ladies and gentlemen, it is now 5:30.
And I will call this regular meeting of the Burnsville City Council to order. It is our tradition to stand for a moment of silence, followed by the pledge of allegiance, and we invite you to join us. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for We have announcements this evening for all of our upcoming meetings, and we have two proclamations to read. Regular council meetings are scheduled for Tuesday, October 22 at 5:30 p.m., and Monday, November 4 at 5:30 p.m. Now, we're meeting on Monday because we are not allowed by law to hold a meeting on election day, and so November 4th, November 5th is an election day, and therefore, we will be meeting on Monday, November 4 at 5:30 p.m. Work sessions are scheduled for Tuesday, October 15 at 5:30 p.m., and Tuesday, October 29 at 5:30 p.m. Our budget meetings are scheduled for Tuesday, October 29 at 5:30 p.m., and Tuesday, November 12 at 5:30 p.m., and then we adopt the levy and the budget on Tuesday, November 3 at 6 p.m. And the public is invited to all of our meetings. They're held here in the council chambers, and for all of our budget meetings, please come and join us, or you can watch us on TV. So our first proclamation this evening is for Fire Prevention Week. Whereas the city of Burnsville is committed to ensuring the safety and security of all those living and visiting Burnsville, and whereas home fires resulted in 2,630 civilian deaths in the United States in 2017, according to the National Fire Protection Association, and fire departments in the United States responded to more than 357,000 home fires. And whereas the fire death rate per 1,000 home fires reported to U.S. Fire Department was 4% higher in 2017 than in 1980. And whereas when the smoke alarm sounds, Burnsville residents may have less than two minutes to escape to safety. And residents who have planned and practiced a home fire escape plan are more prepared and will therefore be more likely to survive a fire. Whereas Burnsville residents should practice the home fire escape plan with everyone in the household, including visitors. And whereas Burnsville residents should teach children to escape on their own in case adults can't help them. And whereas Burnsville's first responders are dedicated to reducing the occurrence of home fires and home fire injuries through prevention and protection education. And Burnsville residents are responsive to public education measures and are able to take action to increase their safety from fire, especially in their homes. And whereas 2019 Fire Protection Week theme, "Not Every Hero Wears a Cape," Plan and Practice Your Escape effectively serves to remind us that we need to take personal steps to increase our safety from fire. Now therefore, I, Elizabeth Couch, Mayor of the city of Burnsville, on behalf of the city council, do hereby proclaim the week of October 6 through the 12, 2019, to be Fire Prevention Week, proclaim this 8th day of October 2019. And on Thursday of this week, we will have an, our fire department will have an open house at Fire Station 1, and that's 140...
143rd.
143rd? 140th. 140th Street. It's by Target, and across the street from Coles. And come, it's a fun event, and hashtag, "You Belong" at the Fire Station 1 Open House for our fire department. The second proclamation is for the National Breast Cancer Awareness Month. Whereas National Breast Cancer Awareness Month was established to increase awareness about the disease and the importance of screening and early detection. And whereas one in eight women will be diagnosed with breast cancer at some point during their lifetime, and the American Cancer Society estimates that more than 250,000 new cases of invasive breast cancer will be diagnosed this year. Whereas mammography can detect breast cancer up to two years before physical symptoms can be seen or felt. Whereas the city of Burnsville is committed to raising awareness about breast cancer and the impact it has on our loved ones, friends, colleagues, and community members, and proclaiming our commitment to prevention, detection, and treatment of breast cancer. Now therefore, I, Elizabeth Couch, Mayor of the city of Burnsville, on behalf of the city council, and in honor of all that have fought against breast cancer, do hereby proclaim October 2019 to be National Breast Cancer Awareness Month in Burnsville, and encourage all women and men to become aware that they are at risk and to check with their doctors to see whether they should get mammograms, proclaim this 8th day of October 2019. And if you'll notice, some of us are wearing pink in honor of Breast Cancer Awareness Month. Thank you to those who wore pink in honor of breast cancer awareness. So, thank you. The next item is Citizens' Comments, and we have Risa Huestead, who would like to speak. Good evening.
Hey, thank you for saying my name right.
You're welcome.
Really appreciate it. Thank you, guys, for taking my comments today. I was hoping that I could get ahead of the ball in discussing with you guys something that's very important to me and other bike commuters around Burnsville. My company moved to Burnsville two years ago, and at that time, it became clear that a lot of us were really going to struggle getting to our homes from Burnsville. A lot of my...
Give us your address for the record, please.
Sorry. 4611 Blaisdell Avenue South.
Okay.
Yes. A lot of our staff members live in Minneapolis or across the river, and we're all working pretty hard to figure out a commuting route to get us to the north side of the river. As I think a lot of you guys know, probably have noticed when driving across the 35W Bridge, it's getting an update, which is great. There's a new multi-use trail that's going to open in 2021 on the bridge. My concern and the concerns of other folks that are using that bridge for commuting is the safety hazard of the flooding between March and, well, I was going to say August, but I think it is actually beginning to flood again now on the Black Dog Trail, which is the direct access route to the new multi-use trail. So right now, I was just hoping to take a couple of seconds and identify who of you would like to begin working with us on a solution.
Well, you know, I'm going to have you, direct you to our Public Works Director. You do realize that for two years, we've had, Mendat has had open houses, and all of this has been discussed, and a lot of it is also on their website. Are you familiar with their website?
Yes, in fact, per my request and the request of other advocates, we had them update their website based on the changes to the trail plans in July of this year. There were a lot of bike advocates and people in the bike and pedestrian community who believed that the trail was going to follow the original plans of extending to Cliff Road, and I think that that has changed in the last two years. I think that there was some miscommunication between folks that, as to what the changes were and to what effects those would have.
I'm going to have you speak with our Public Works Director, Ryan Peterson. He's up to date on all of those strategies and things that happened between all of that and also with the flooding. And so I think it's always good to get updated information and factual information to understand what's going on. And the other is that Mendat is the authority on the bridge because it's a federal highway. Now, we put all of our input into it, and we also have a trail that goes down along the river, the Greenway Trail, that goes over to 77. So, but, you're talking about the new trail with what's going on, and I think with some of the updates on the website, you could probably speak to that. And you can speak offline to Mr. Peterson about that.
Can I, can I ask really quickly? Are you interested in looking into solutions?
We've been, oh, we are, we've been looking into solutions, and I've been very much working with all of them. And then, of course, you have two members of the city council who sits on the 35W Solutions Alliance, who have been working on all of that. It's not that we haven't been working on solutions. We've been working on them for about two years, and I'm not quite sure because it's between Bloomington, us, but also Mendat is the agency that has that authority. So is there anything that you can add to this? Councilmember Keely and Councilmember Gustafson?
Well, happy to speak. As a biker, primarily because my wife really got me into it pretty heavy, you know, this trail development was a great idea and a great sign because there isn't to get across that bridge today.
Right, huge improvement.
We'd go east and go across the old Cedar Bridge to get into Bloomington, and so there is one that exists. This was going to be a new one. The issue of addressing the elevation for flooding was, you know, we have an existing Black Dog Trail.
Yeah.
That is underwater most of the time. And so because that whole stretch along the river is a flood problem, I think, early on, they may have taken the tack, let's add this new pedestrian bridge. But what are we going to do to elevate it to keep it out of the water that isn't already going to be underwater from here till the Cedar Bridge? So we have a, the problem extends far beyond just the bridge crossing at 35, and, you know, I don't know what the cost would be to elevate that Black Dog Trail, but it's probably very expensive. So, you know, we've been in the 100-year flood four or five times in the last 10 years, and that's, it's caused a problem along, you know, for our recreation along the river. So, well, nature's not cooperating with us. I don't know if, you know, and I've read a lot of emails...
I don't know if there's any more money coming from the feds to address that issue.
Yeah, to be able to do it. You know, we can certainly advocate and voice the opinion and carry that message, which, but I'm not sure that at this point, the reaction that we got was, yeah, you know, this is, we're a little late now. So I'm certainly willing to listen to your ideas and be a voice to advocate for some change. At this point, I, it's a little, that bus has left the station, so I think we're going to have a tough, tough haul to get any changes to the design. And again, unfortunately, the Black Dog Trail has been closed most of the summer.
116 days, yeah.
Yeah, I mean, it's, and we just got it done. We just did, you know, a ceremonious groundbreaking and opening, and then basically went underwater shortly after that, a year later, so it's been frustrating.
Dan, do you have anything?
No, I'm, I'm, yeah. Where we're at right now. And it was sad that they couldn't come up with a solution for the whole thing, but it is really expensive to do that with that trail that we have down by the river as well. And I know they've looked at a lot of different solutions, so it's not like it wasn't talked about because it certainly was. I was one that was actually very excited about this whole thing connecting throughout the entire metro area, you know, the Bloomington system, the Greenway down in Minneapolis, and...
And because we've been also really looking at connecting Burnsville all the way into St. Paul, and that's why the Green Trail was a great solution in that regard, but it's also underwater from Burnsville even to Eagan. And so when you're looking at just across this new bridge, both Councilmember Keely and Councilmember Gustafson sit on the 35W Solutions Alliance, and you've been on that committee for how long?
Years.
For years.
Many years.
So they've been really working on all of that, and all of us have been working on that trail, simply because we hear from all of the bikers in our community. And we're doing some of the solutions within what we have control over, but when it comes to where we have a secondary position and just giving input, because the money comes from the state and the federal government to do all of that.
In my, in my conversations with Mendat, they identified the trail as being a Burnsville responsibility, and it's actually after lots of conversations with them that I've come to you all.
Yeah, okay.
Is that fair?
Yeah, I'm going to go to Mr. Peterson. No, because, see, the thing is, who's going to also take care of that trail during the winter months?
And who, Burnsville, Burnsville does that now, correct? Nope, nobody does it.
Yeah, I'm going to, I'm going to go to Mr. Peterson.
Yeah, um, there, thank you, Madam Mayor. There are, there's currently a trail from Cliff Road that goes up to the Minnesota River that would be connection to the one going over the river.
And that's on Cliff Road, which is ours.
The trail is, yeah.
Yeah.
And that's going to be rebuilt with the project, and we will be the owners, the lucky owners of that trail.
Yeah.
So we'll be responsible for maintenance. Obviously, when it's underwater, it's not going to be serviceable, but we will be cleaning it up much like we did the regional trail this year. So if there's a feeling there isn't going to be a way to get from Cliff down to the river on a trail, as long as it's not underwater, that's incorrect. There will be a trail, they're rebuilding it with the project, but it's not being flood-proofed like the highway. And what we've been saying is the mitigation for this will be, the orange line will be opening up very, about the same exact time, you'll be able to get on a bus at either one of the heart of the city stations, and then you can get off at the 98th Street Station.
Closing, closing that gap on the regional bicycle transportation network, that is not something that is part of the current project parameters, is that correct?
That's correct. But there is, there is a mitigation effort, I mean, during those times. And this is the, we've had more rain this year than it's ever been, since they've been keeping track of the records, and so this is not going to be, I shouldn't say, I don't believe this will be the normal situation. I believe we will likely get a flood maybe a year, but it's, I don't foresee this being underwater for four months like we had this year.
So it's not for lack of us working on some, on all of these issues that have to do with the bike trail. It is working with Mendat and then also having flood issues and then taking care of that and maintaining that trail.
If you don't mind, I would like to continue speaking with the Dans.
Okay. Now, I'm going, because we have, we set aside five minutes for you to do that. I'm going to have you speak with them afterwards.
Two minutes over.
And you're going to speak with them because we have still work for the city to do.
Of course.
And you may have a conversation with both Councilmember Keely and Councilmember Gustafson afterwards.
Thanks for your time.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
Yeah, yes. The next is additions to the final agenda, and this is for emergency items only. Ms. Mascolli, do we have any emergency items?
We do not, Madam Mayor.
Okay, members of the council?
No.
Okay, and we'll move on to the consent agenda. The consent agenda is a group of items that's considered to be routine and will be enacted with one motion. However, an item in a consent agenda can be removed for a separate discussion and vote. Is there anyone in the audience who wishes an item on a consent agenda to be removed for a separate discussion and vote? Anyone in the audience? Ms. Mascolli?
Madam Mayor, staff would ask that council continue item 4E to a future meeting.
Okay. Members of the council, may I have a motion at this time to continue 4E?
Move to approve.
Second.
There's a motion and a second to continue item 4E. Thank you. Members of the council, any other items to be pulled for a separate discussion and vote? Okay, may I, may I have a motion for the balance then?
Move to approve the balance of the consent agenda.
Councilmember Keely makes the motion.
Second.
Second by Councilmember Workman. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign, and the motion carries. We are at the regular agenda, and the first item on the regular agenda is a public hearing. And this is to approve an on-sale, Sunday-on-sale liquor license for Tavern 13, Inc., doing business as Tavern 13 located at 2510 Horizon Drive. Ms. Collins is presenting this evening. Ms. Collins.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, City Council. This is a online, or I'm sorry, on-sale liquor application for Tavern 13 on Horizon Drive. An investigation has been completed on the principles involved. Nothing has been found to deny the license. Fees have been paid, and the license will be contention upon all documents, taxes, and permits being reviewed, approved, and paid. This is a public hearing. I stand for any questions.
Thank you. Any questions for Ms. Collins? This is a public hearing. I will open the public hearing. Is there anyone who wishes to speak to this item? Anyone who wishes to speak to this item? Seeing no one, I will close the public hearing. Members of the council, your pleasure.
Move to approve.
Second.
Councilmember Schultz makes the motion, second by Councilmember Keely. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay, and the motion carries. Thank you. The next item is a resolution to approve Fire Station 1 land purchase. Presenting this evening is our fire chief, Mr. B.J. Joln.
Chief. Thank you, Madam Mayor, members of the council. Appreciate your time tonight, here to discuss purchasing land for, to replace Fire Station 1. We've had a lot of discussion about that. Fire Station 1 was identified to be replaced in the facility study in 2015. The current location is not ideal for the response and does not meet future needs. It's a very tight location for anybody that's familiar with it, very odd-shaped lot, and would not benefit the city long-term to rebuild the fire station there. Staff with some consulting help evaluated nine other locations for access, response times, feasibility, future operational needs, and identified a location to be the best option after looking through all different, the matrix of all the different factors. We hired a broker to assist us with the negotiation of the purchase agreement, and we identified two parcels on the northeast corner of 143rd Street and Newton Avenue, and those two parcels equal 4.42 acres. It's currently vacant lots. The purchase agreement was negotiated for 1.2 million, or 671 per square foot, the earnest money of $19,500, also renaming Corporate Center Drive between Judicial and South Cross to honor Gene Happy as Gene Happy Way. And it would, the purchase agreement also allows us a 60-day due diligence period with the option to extend another 60 days if we find anything in the Phase 1 environmental study. So the action that we request is approve the budget amendment in the background and adopt the resolution to purchase the land.
Any questions for Chief Joln? Councilmember Keely.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Not a question, but an observation comment. It's been a long road to find a piece of property to house a new fire station. Congratulations. It's been a little bit of a wait, but looks like we're actually beyond time, if not, maybe a little early, get started early.
Yeah.
If everything goes well. So congratulations. It's, I think we're overdue. I remember touring the firehouse back in 2015 during that facility study, and it was definitely something that was a need, that was in the immediate future, and I'm glad we were able to address it and fund it properly. Thank you.
Councilmember Workman?
Thank you. Chief, can you just give us a little comparison to this spot versus where you're at right now, and the benefits would be to why this is the ideal spot?
Yes, so, thank you, Councilmember Workman. It's a little over two acres where we're at now. When you look at the access, you know, we're going to respond to about 7,000 calls for emergency service this year. Two-thirds of those are done out of Station 1, and when you come out of Station 1, you have to go through one or two uncontrolled intersections every single time you go on an emergency response. And going through uncontrolled intersections slows the response and is also dangerous for both our emergency vehicles and the general public, as there's no way to change lights because of stop signs there. So we're going against traffic every single time. The third piece of that is, when you look at the orientation, just in the master plan, in the future needs of the fire station, generally, you're going to add apparatus bays and sleeping rooms, and on the current site, there would be no way... And on the current site, there would be no way in the future to add on to that building. It would be so tight. So we'd be landlocked into that facility in perpetuity unless we were to acquire some neighboring land. So when you look at best practices, we'd be kind of pushing ourselves into that without following best practice and making good investments. Thank you.
Anything else? I want to commend you for all of the hard work that you and your team have done, because I remember touring that building as well and being around it. And I can say that it is a sick building because of all the mold. And that's not the ideal situation for those who are responding to emergency, and we don't need for them to be sick. So I'm really pleased that we finally have found a location for the fire station to be built and that we can make sure that we respond to what our residents expect. And I look every month and see the uptick on all of your emergency medical service calls. It's always so much higher, and all the work that you do each and every week with educating not only at the business level, but in the schools and on the residential level, on what is good fire practice and what people should know what to do. So thank you for all of the hard work that you all have done, that we're finally here. And with that, members of the council, if you have no other questions for the chief, a motion is in order. Staff is recommending a resolution to purchase the land for Fire Station One.
I'm delighted to move to approve the item of course. Second.
Councilmember Keeley makes the motion, second by Councilmember Gustafson. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. And the motion carries. Congratulations. And the next item is the ordinance renaming a point of Corporate Center Drive to Gene Happy Way. And I believe this too is yours. Chief.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Members of the council, never thought I'd be standing in front of you talking about a street name change. But thanks to the great work by our Public Works Department and city staff to help me out with this project. It was negotiated as part of the purchase agreement to, to change the street name. And we've notified the adjacent landowners. There's nobody's address that's actually attributed to that piece of the street. But any property that is not owned by EFH, I've made contact with the building owner and occupant, and no one had any concerns with that. So we, in order to change the street name, I learned we need an ordinance. So we need to change the ordinance in order to name the street, and there's a contingency on there that the property closes to change the street name. So we'd ask for your approval of that ordinance.
Thank you. And one of the things is that people don't remember Mr. Gene Happy, that a great deal within the Tiff One area where this is going to be named, this street is going to be named after him. And we're not setting a precedent. We have Conley Drive, we have all, we have parks, the Kelleher Park. And it is in honor of the people in Burnsville who have made a difference in our community. And certainly, Mr. Happy, in, in this whole area, if you look around all of those buildings, and I know because I've been here, he built a lot of those buildings in, in the Tiff One area. So that section is really appropriate to be Gene Happy Way. So, Councilmember Keeley.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I would echo that. You know, we, cities have named streets after founders of cities or folks that played a big role in the development, the birth of a city, major landowners, that, farmers, et cetera. And so Gene was a unique character. He was very engaged in this community. He built, I don't know, 45, 46 buildings in the city of Burnsville. It's an enormous amount of development. And I certainly appreciate him and miss him. He was a great voice to have a conversation with. He had his opinions about the city, and I always enjoyed having a conversation with him and as well, Mr. Whalen, who's in the audience. So I think it's a great way to honor someone.
And Mr. Happy's daughter.
And Mr. Happy's daughter, sorry. It's a great way to honor Gene, I think, and to name this segment of a road after him is very appropriate, and I certainly support it. Thank you.
Burnsville Heights, the developer there named every street after his daughters. Shirley Lane, you can go up and down. So we're not setting any precedent, and this is a great honor to the work that your father has done in this community. And so there is a motion?
Second.
No, no motion. I'd like, sorry. I'd be happy to make a motion.
I was going to.
I'm very, very, very happy, H-A-P-P-E, to make the motion to approve.
There's a motion by Councilmember Keeley, second by Councilmember Schultz. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. And the motion carries. Congratulations. I'm glad we got it done. Excellent. The, I will now recess the Burnsville City Council meeting so the Economic Development Authority meeting can convene. President Gustafson.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I'd like to call to order the Economic Development Authority meeting. Are there any additions to the final agenda? Seeing none, we'll move on to the consent agenda, and that's all we have on our agenda tonight, and that's the approval of our minutes from September 17th, and also the approval of agreement for economic development and bond counsel attorney services. This is on consent. I need a motion?
Move to approve.
Motion?
Second.
A second? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, and it passes. Seeing nothing on the regular agenda and nothing on miscellaneous, I need a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Motion?
Second.
Second? All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. It's over your duty again.
Thank you. I will now reconvene the Burnsville City Council meeting. And members of the council, there is no, nothing else to come before the body this evening, and a motion to adjourn is in order.
Motion to adjourn.
There is a motion by Councilmember Keeley. And second by Councilmember Schultz. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. And the motion carries. Good night, and thank you for being with us. Good night, and thank you for being with us.